For joining us for the Select Board Meeting for January fourteenth, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. And this evening, we have the Green Communities Committee with us, and we're going to be discussing its meeting specifically on our Green Communities Application and also the grant projects that we're considering right now. So Stephen, do you want to give us a little update on how we received the approval as being a green community? And where we are in the process?
Sure. I distributed by hand figuring that he says, might as well hand out as many paper copies as possible since we're talking about sustainable community. I apologize, right.
So I've just handed, just a brief set of slides here to give us some background. You should have one at your seat. If not, I can give you another one. I think I put the extras down there. That's strange. Okay, so sorry. So just to give you some background, we had been working on the Green Communities Application for some time. And after, we had originally submitted it in October, and there was some back and forth with the Department of, uh, D O E R. Department of, uh,
Energy Resources.
Energy Resources, yes. At the state, who manages the Green Communities Program. And we Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, a gentleman with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, had assisted us in the preparation of the plan. In fact, he was our consultant essentially for it. And there was some back and forth about our energy reduction program and what things needed to be in it versus what we thought needed to be in it. And so we were kind of up against the deadline to sort it all out. But we did, and we were awarded Green Commune Status in mid-December on the eighteenth. With our award, with our designation, we received notice that we would be eligible for $155,000 grant. And those grant applications are due on January twenty-ninth, so once again, we're going to be kind of up against the deadline. And we have connected, reconnected with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to assist us with the grant application, make sure we don't miss the timeline. There are, I have listed here, some of the eligible uses. It's energy conservation measures, energy audits or engineering studies, but they want a higher level of engineering study, not, I don't think they want kind of base level feasibility studies. Procurement, installation of energy management services, adoption of demand-side reduction initiatives, adoption of energy efficiency policies, financing the siting and construction of renewable and alternative energy projects on municipal own property.
Before we move ahead, I just want to say that this, becoming a green community, I would say your group worked several years to make that happen. And it went before town meeting, and there was a vote, but after that vote, there's been a lot of work that has gone in. The town has to, had to put in certain policies in regards to vehicles. We had to do baseline measurements. And so it was really a lot of work to get it done on the deadline, which was the end of October.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's an excellent point, Marie, because the toughest parts, even though our energy reduction plan turned out to be a lot tougher to put together than we thought it was going to be. The real tough parts that communities often struggle with are the buy-rite zoning of alternative energy or renewable energy facilities, like solar, basically buy-rite zoning for solar panels, say, on your home or something like that. And then the stretch code, which is the energy-efficient building code that is, I think, most building codes are moving towards higher requirements for energy efficiency, but the stretch code is kind of the front end of that. And it was the work of people like David Miller and other, and Andrea, Andrea Shaysen and other people in the community over the past few years that set us up to be able to have this last component be our rapport, our program, and then be eligible for the grant. So I do want to commend, a lot of work got done certainly before my time here, and it, those really were the most important components.
And without that work that was done ahead of time, there's no way we would have been able to finish things up in October and get that preparation and then get the vote in. So thank you very much. That was a lot of hard work.
And town meeting deserves, I mean, the zoning and the stretch code really are a credit to town meeting as well. So the residents of Long Meadow also supported this pro, this effort through their votes at town meeting. So anyway, to get back to that, I also, the next slide shows our municipal energy use. And this really is, when I say green communities, it really is a program designed for municipalities to reduce their energy consumption for the municipal corporation. So basically, the org, the organs, the town government's facilities, town government operations, it's way, it's incentivizing reductions in that energy consumption, not necessarily on the private side. There are other funds out there for that, but this, this is specifically for towns to, like I said, reduce their overall consumption. So this is an inventory from our study that shows buildings and then other, like vehicles, streetlights, things like that, that show our consumption. And for the sake of apples-to-apples comparisons, they have what's called an M M B T U, which is a unit of measurement for energy consumption. And what that is, the intent of the M M B T U is to make kilowatt-hours in thermes, which are the unit of measurement for consumption of natural gas and other measurements, like miles per gallon and things like that. M M B T U is, is something that gets all those different energy units into apples-to-apples comparison. So then if you go to the next page, you can see our energy reduction plan, and this came together very quickly. Most of these projects had been discussed in the past and were on, and many of them are on our five-year capital improvement plan. I think it's been, has been discussed before. The town has had several energy audits and facilities audits in the past and, and has plans that they have started to implement already for, to achieve energy efficiency. Our baseline year is fiscal year two thousand and eleven. And that was, you can look back a few years, and part of the reason why we did that is to achieve our 20% energy reduction goal. We wanted to get credit for the work we've done in the last couple of years on really reducing our energy consumption through some building management systems and electrical lighting systems that are more efficient. And you can see some of those on the top, you know, handful of projects have already been implemented.
And where does the 20% goal come in, come from?
We need to use 20% less energy than we did in fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
By being part of the green communities?
No, by, right, and so using the grant to help get, find ways to get to that.
And so the basis, two thousand and eleven?
Two thousand and eleven.
And we've implemented some of these even before we became a green community?
Correct.
So when do we have to, we have to achieve it by next year?
No, no, it's, I think, two thousand and twenty or something like that. I mean, it's, we have, we have many years to, not many, but in fact, I have the plan here. I think it's twenty twenty.
So 20% by twenty twenty?
I thought that was it, but to be honest with you, we had the same program in Lancaster, and I could be thinking about that one. So I, but I know it's a multi, it's a multi-year plan, not a one or two. I mean, they give you a long time to get to it.
All right. There's no penalty.
They don't take the grant back.
They technically could make you pay it back, but there's, you know, mid, midterm, long-term, you know, goals. So we have the list of programs here that, that were approved by the Green Energy Office. Now, one of the ones that's not on here, I know has been raised, is the LED lights for the tennis court. And I don't know if that had been, and to be candid with you, it didn't come up in our discussions in the preparation of the report. And so I don't know if in the design of the tennis courts, that was something that hadn't been fully evolved by the time we pulled this report together. But for whatever reason, it's not in there. I, it certainly could be added in, you know, as a program, as a project in the future, and as we prepare to do that project, that's something we're certainly going to look into. But as we, after we get the award, I've been looking at the list of projects and thinking about the grants. And my goal, which is not really stated in the plan, but it is, it is the goal of the plan, is to find a project that not only gets us a high reduction in energy consumption, but also yields a higher rate of savings. And so you could use some or all of that savings to capitalize additional ERP projects, like use it, if there's an upcharge for convert, for going from standard tennis court lights to LEDs, use savings from the initial project that's capitalized by that grant to, you know, finance that long-term. And so the one that has quickly emerged and has been mentioned in this room, certainly by Mark many times, is the streetlight purchase. And I was, I had fi, I had had, I dug out, or I should say, I had Mike Rabel dig out for me the two thousand and ten study we had done by George Woodbury about purchasing the streetlights from Wamiko Western Mass Electric Company, and then possibly converting them to LEDs. That certainly is a hot trend. And I had seen in, from the Green Communities website, that Watertown had used their grant exclusively to cap, to finance conversions. Now Watertown had already owned their streetlights, but they did use it to purchase the LED conversions. And that was, I think, two thousand and ten, and I talked to the town of Watertown, I think, the city of Watertown. And they said that the, even in the last couple of years, the fixtures have gotten cheaper and more efficient. So I asked them, how did they come to use the money for the project? And they said George Woodbury helped them. And it turns out that Mr. Woodbury is a national expert, you know, guru for, for doing these types of things, and I happened to reach him. And he agreed to look back at our two thousand and ten report and take another sort of back-of-the-envelope look at our numbers. And my discussion with him was very encouraging. We do have fifteen hundred and twelve streetlights. And on our, based on our, on his, his two thousand and ten analysis, which went into our ERP, you can see from the project list, it's about a three hundred and fifty-eight M M B T U reduction in consumption, which is significant.
And what is our 20% that we're aiming to come down? And is that?
It is sixteen thousand M M B T U's.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's a lot.
So if we look at this for five, would it be three fifty-eight a year reduction, and then it'll be added every year as?
I take that back. I think we've already done, we have projected sixteen thousand M M B T U's. That is the 20%. So this would be three hundred and,
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to the one, the, the initial municipal energy use, it shows we're consuming annually seventy thousand. So the sixteen is a percentage of that. I don't know if it's exactly 20%. So anyway, it is, when you look at individual projects, I mean, there are things, there are several other behavioral initiatives. Best building management, best practices, and things like that, things that we're already starting to implement. But those things, over time, yield the greatest number of savings that, that drive a lot of our, our achieving that sixteen thousand M M B T U reduction. But when you look at individual projects, the streetlights is a, is a big one. Larger than, say, you know, school boilers, as I outlined in, in the next slide. So I did talk to Mr. Woodbury, and the, so we went over what we think could be gained now. And I have to caution that the numbers are really back-of-the-envelope numbers and probably subject to change. And the one number we don't have updated is the purchase price from Wamiko. And I did request that, and there's about a two-week lead time to get a new proposal from them, and we should get it hopefully. I requested it middle of last week. We're hoping to get it middle of next week. But we certainly want that in time for our grant application, if at all possible. So essentially, we, it's about $275,000 a year. We paid at least the streetlights, the fifteen hundred streetlights.
That's what we pay now?
Correct. And then if we own them, it would cost us $160,000 per year to operate the lights, which,
You mean the electricity?
No, that's what it costs us now to operate the lights, $160,000.
It's current S one costs, oh, oh, maybe it's a hundred and sixty thousand now.
So that's where you,
No, we, we pay the S one tariff, I thought.
Right.
Right, so that's, that's the two, two seventy-five.
We pay that tariff whether we own them or they own them.
Right, but I think it's, our, according to this, our lease is the, the two seventy-five.
Right, but that's just to lease the lights. That has nothing to do with paying to operate. So our total costs are two seventy-five plus one sixty.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the refer, you said top, top rate?
No, it's called S one tariff. So there's, the Department of Public Utilities has these listed tariffs. Okay, that they're, they're basically the electric companies allowed to charge rates. And they're by type of bulb and type of fixture, okay? But by type of bulb, it will say, the S one rate for a thousand watt halogen bulb, or whatever it is, will be eight dollars and twenty-seven cents per month, or whatever that it comes up to. And that eight twenty-seven a month is based on normal daylight hours in Massachusetts, okay? Year-round, and you pay that eight dollars a month, whether it's July or whether it's December.
So this tariff is to pay for the electricity?
For the electricity, correct.
Okay.
Separate from that, since Wamiko owns all the lights, we pay them a rental fee. It's their established fee.
That's the two seventy-five.
Right, and that is based on each fixture. So it may say, this fixture is, you know, twelve dollars and fifteen cents a month, and this fixture is nine dollars and ten cents. You know, and, you know, and you've got, you know, two hundred and seventy-five of those fixtures at X dollars a month, kind of thing, Alex.
Right.
So that's where the two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But that's, it says utility-owned existing system costs, and this actually says two eighty-five.
Right.
But he, he'd reduce that.
Okay, but the,
But that's, that's all in there, I think.
But that's our, that, no, you see, there's two things, Stephen. One is what we pay per month as our lease of the lights. The second thing is what does Wamiko value those lights at, which is their depreciated value of the capital of the lights? So they got lights they put in in nineteen sixty-two, which they're carrying on their books for thirteen cents. And they got lights they put in last year, they're carrying on their books at $3,000. Whatever it is, they have a, a property value of those lights. Now, the problem is, George Woodbury values the Wamiko lights as depreciated differently from the way Wamiko values the lights. When you go to say, we want to buy the lights to eliminate this $275,000 in annual rental fees, Wamiko says, fine, our book value is $285,000. Pay us $285,000, we wipe it off our books, and they're yours.
Is that what it is?
I think it's around that. But George Woodbury says, don't pay them $285,000 because they're only worth $185,000. There was a significant discrepancy.
I remember discussion last year.
Right, what, what our consultant thought they're worth versus what the electric company. And in cases where there's a disagreement, you have two alternatives. One is you negotiate to a settlement, or you can appeal to the Department of Public Utilities. You can actually appeal, and that's what Mr. Woodbury had recommended we do, is go to the DPUC and say, here's why we think they're only worth $170,000, and we'd like you to assign them that value so we can buy them for that value as opposed to buy them at the value that Wamiko thinks they are. During this process of how much are your lights worth, we found a whole lot of lights that we were paying rent for that didn't exist anymore. You know, and we found a lot of other discrepancies that got, over time, got cleaned up. So the issue is, you know, what's the, what's the per-year lease cost for the lights? And what does it cost to buy them out?
Right.
Okay, but once you buy them, as Stephen's shown on his thing here, you know, they're not free. I mean, you gotta, first of all, some of them exist on phone poles that belong to Wamiko. So if we own the lights, we'd have to pay them rent to their poles. Some of them belong on poles to the telephone company. We'd have to pay rent to the phone company. Plus, since we're not equipped to maintain the lights, we'd have to go get a service contract to maintain the lights. And when you net all that out, what we've found out is that even though we're paying $275,000 to lease it, we'd only save about a hundred and eighty, oh, excuse me, we'd only save apparently about $80,000, right, Stephen? It's what you've come up with by buying, which, you know, the word only and eighty thousand dollars probably doesn't belong in the same. We'd save eighty thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year, which means you'd save eighty thousand a year, and in four years or four and a half years, you basically covered, you know, covered the cost of paying $280,000 to buy them. The problem is, so, so we, we need to separate out the cost of renting the lights versus buying the lights versus the cost of operating the lights. And the third part of this story is, so, you know, the, the price we pay right now, $160,000 a year to operate the lights, is based on operating very inefficient lights. You could then put in highly efficient lights, right, and save a significant amount of money in the electricity to run highly efficient lights. The incentive to do that is if we own the lights, like you would at your own home, you want to put in the most efficient lights. The problem we ran into a few years ago, though, was there are no electric meters on these lights. They're based on the tariff. They're based on, you know, X dollars a month, which is an average of sunrise at this time and sunset at that time. And they're also based on the type of light, so that a halogen light is different from a, from a mercury vapor light versus different from whatever else they have. But there was no tariff, and I don't believe there is still, but I'm not sure, there was no tariff for high-efficiency lights. So that, I remember one of the numbers was like eight dollars a month, you know, for a, for a halogen light.
Can I update on that?
Yeah.
The, because he, he did address that with me. The tar, the tariff is, would be the S two tariff, so the rates would be the same. But each LED fixture now had their ca, you know, the catalog cut, the page that, you know, explains, this is the fixture you're buying, has the factor of what the charge should be. And he had it at, like, point eighty-five, eighty-five one-hundredths of a cent or something like that, per light, per month. I mean, something very minor. And so the savings, not including the purchase price, which is the number we don't know, or the, the number we have not updated. We don't know what the current number is. It may be the exact same as, as the two sixty-five or whatever they quoted us in two thousand and ten. But you can save gross, $170,000 a year, if you converted all fifteen hundred and twelve streetlights to LED. And I say gross, that means not, that means maintenance contracts and some other things, but still a, a significant number. And he also said that that could be drilled down even further because the utility companies have incentives that they have to give out to incentivize conversions when they, when they go to appeal for a higher rate to the, the Public Services Commission. They usually trot, trot out these great incentives they offer as a way to get permission to charge higher rates. And so they have to give these out. I know, my discussions with Wamiko, they do have these things that they are interested in distributing. And then there are also lease, lease-to-own essentially financing options through some of the light vendors. So you really would not have much in the way of upfront cost, and then you could finance it, and then, you know, you finance, finance it for a ten-year term. You're still saving net, you know, a certain amount of money, thirty, fifty thousand, whatever it is. And then after the, after the term of the financing's up, you're saving, you know, a hundred percent. So,
Could I clarify that then? You, these two numbers are, are added, so you save eighty thousand a year for ownership plus a hundred and seventy a year if we do the LED conversion. Oh, so the one seventy includes the eighty. Okay, that's what I wasn't sure about.
Yeah.
Stephen, can I just ask, I, I get that factor. I guess the question is, does the DPUC recognize that, so you would only get billed at that factor? Because I didn't, I, I wasn't aware that you could get a multiplier in your rate by telling, hey, Wamiko, we've got these LEDs, so take that rate multiple.
But it's the same thing you just said, though. It's done by light fixture.
Well, but, but the question is, has DPUC recognized that factor as part of the billing process? Okay, that, that's, that was my question.
But that's what Mr. Woodbury says.
No, no, that, that's fine, because that's a change from the way they had done it.
So they have, so that's, so, because I raised that issue because you had mentioned it before, Mark, and he said, no, they, they, it's done by light, and they do have it for the LEDs. I, I think there are utility companies in other parts of the state that are, have been a little more aggressive about this. But my discussion with Wamiko was that they were more than willing to work with us on this project.
So Stephen, this factor, you were saying, you said they were in the factor for each different bulb could be seen in the catalog?
Well, you're, the, the vendor who sells you the LED lights has a, you know, a page,
Yep.
Saying, here's a light, and then there's all these specifications and performance specifications of what the light does. I've never seen one, but I have seen, actually, I take that back. I have seen them because I was looking online to see how much these things cost. And there's a factor in there that goes along with the light, just like there's a factor that goes along with our current lights that is, that is verified by an independent laboratory.
So, so that, that factor is based on increased efficiency?
It's based on the consumption of, of the unit.
Right, okay.
Because they don't individually meter the lights.
Gotcha. But the question is, that I think Mark was getting at, and this is obviously an important fact, is, is one thing to recognize that the bulb uses less energy, but does, is there a specific tariff? And is it laid out for all the different types of high-efficiency lights?
I believe it is. That is what I was told.
By Mr. Woodbury.
By Mr. Woodbury.
And, and I assume these vendors, when they're putting these factors in, I mean, they're selling to different states. So every state's got a different,
No, but, but a factor's a factor.
No, no, I understand. The energy factor is true, but the question is, does every state recognize it? And to what extent do they recognize it? I mean, that's, that's sort of the sixty-four thousand dollar question, right?
Yeah, based on his explanation to me, sorry. Based on his explanation to me, I, I, I think I could clumsily analogize it with a car and miles per gallon.
You don't need to analogize it.
Well, no, I mean, but, 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 you know, different states have different gas prices and different, different gas taxes.
Right.
But your car's going to get the same miles per gallon in every state. So the lights, and, and so when you buy it, you're told that this is the miles per gallon, and that's the, to, you know, EPA verified number. The independent lab tests these things out from what Mr. Woodbury said, and you get charged based on what the light, what this thing consumes based on what the, you know, what, what, on the, that's assigned to the unit, the factor.
What, what the tariff is.
The tariff is, is,
With the tariff minus the factor.
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, in a way, then, what, what actual electricity is being used is not the point. It's what the imputed level of electricity that's being used according to this factor is what counts.
But the factor's a derivative of energy, of reduced energy consumption.
Right, I mean, I guess,
Based on independent study, I guess.
Right, but we just want to make sure that Massachusetts really is recognizing.
Oh, yeah, they do. I mean, like I said, the, the town of Watertown had saved $30,000 on twelve hundred lights in the first year, and I think that was net savings. and I think that was net savings. And that was, and as they said, they're more efficient now than they were before. So it's, and that's real money that they've saved, that's money they're not paying, essentially. They did own their lights beforehand, so they converted their own lights, but, and they also partnered with the town of Arlington on a purchase, uh, which I think helps them save a little bit on their upfront cost. But, like I said, it saves real money, and the reason why I kind of, and on the last page here, I do have some other options that are in our ERP to look at. As I started looking at this, like I said, I had a goal of achieving high-energy, you know, high-energy consumption reduction or a significant amount, and then had a second goal of reducing costs so we could recapitalize additional projects. And, uh, but there also is a component of readiness to this that is important to remember. The grant is due at the end of January, and you have to do the project in a year. And, um, so that means not every project on our ERP is ready to be implemented on that schedule. And so balancing out all those factors, and in light of how, um, each, every time I peel a layer on the onion, it seems to be more favorable, applying the grant towards LED conversion of our lights, subject to purchasing them from Womiko, seems to be the best opportunity for us to use the money, drive down our upfront costs, get our cost-saving, get a full realization of our cost savings more quickly. And I, I, I think, I'm confident it can happen, and the allotted, I'm confident we can apply, um, by January twenty-ninth for this because we know enough about it because of our study, and we can get it done, at least get a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars' worth of conversions done in a year.
Are you saying stay with the poles right as they are right now and just convert the LEDs? Okay, so that would just be step one. If, that's without purchasing the poles.
No, you gotta...
They purchase the lights.
You gotta purchase the lights.
Yeah, Womiko does not necessarily own all the poles either. Yeah, we would just purchase the lights.
We're not purchasing the poles, right?
Some of them we are, though, like in their sections of town where our streetlights aren't freestanding most of the way in the decorative. Those are Womiko's poles, and there, we would buy those poles. But what I'll call traditional phone poles, you know, the wooden kind, some of those belong to the phone company, not to Womiko, and so, you know, and some of them that belong to Womiko, we're still not buying them.
Richard?
Can I back up a minute? It sounded like you said, "Just convert just the lights without purchasing the poles," was that what you meant? Okay, then you were talking about the whole thing with the conversion, okay, well, there's a lot of information. How many poles do we have that would belong to us?
Fifteen hundred and twelve.
No, us totally, not as a joint ownership with the power company or anybody. How many would be ours for replacement on our tab?
Fifteen hundred and twelve.
I thought you said they would be off on the Womiko, and we'd be...
If we bought them from, there is, and truthfully, the study has, I can show, the study has a breakdown of that. But I think the overall number there, because there are some, do we have that study?
No, we don't, you don't have it, I've got it. Richard, can I answer your question maybe?
Yeah.
Because I think I understand. I think that what Stephen is recommending, and certainly something I would support, is the first thing we do is we take ownership of the lights, okay? We take ownership of the light, the existing lights, and whatever accoutrements that come with the lights that we need to take. Where the lights have a freestanding pole, we take that pole. Where they have brackets, we take that, we buy that bracket. Whatever it is, we, first step, own those, okay? Where it's a phone pole that's owned by the electric company for stringing electric wires, or by the phone company for stringing phone wires, we don't buy those poles, but we essentially buy what we can buy.
Freestanding.
My personal recommendation is, we pay for that out of a town bond. Then we use our green communities money to begin upgrading those, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars' worth, apparently, because that's what we've got, to upgrade them based on the least efficient lights to making them the most efficient. And we do that over the course of years, so it's really a two-step process. Buy the, so we own, you know, you're not gonna upgrade lights you don't own. So we're gonna buy the lights, and once we own them, then we start up, I assume that's the approach you're taking, Stephen? Then we go forward, and when you run out of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, you can theoretically use the savings to take the next set of lights.
You could buy, I mean, at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, or even if it's a hundred thousand net of maintenance contracts and things like that, you can do a lot of boilers at a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so that's where we feel that this is the best bang for our buck. And it is like, I didn't, honestly, when I started, and, Richard, this is the light inventory, and you need a magnifying glass, I can't read. Um, but it is, it goes through how many different kinds of lights by bulb, and that's fifteen hundred and twelve. So, according to George Woodbury, because he went and looked back at the report over the weekend, he figures it's about a half a million bucks to upgrade all of our lights. And...
Wait, and of the five hundred, two eighty-five is purchasing from Womiko?
No, that's not including the purchase price.
It's two separate things. Purchasing is totally separate from upgrading.
Right, so I don't carry a number in here for purchase because I don't have an upgraded number. Call it two sixty-five that they said in two thousand and ten. So, if you say, um, then you're looking at an overall project cost of seven sixty, seven sixty-five. Five hundred for the LED lights, and then two sixty-five to purchase it hypothetically. Then you would apply essentially the hundred and fifty thousand we'd be getting from the green communities to offset that cost, so then you're down to six fifteen. And then you could make the decision then, as Mark said, to do a six hundred and fifteen thousand dollar project or, um, do it over ti, and just get it all done at once, or do it over time. And to some extent, we would probably retain a consultant like George Woodbury to help analyze what is the right approach, based on current market pricing and availability and things like that.
Richard, you had another question?
Yeah, I just keep thinking we're mixing apples and oranges, and I'm trying to get them in separate bins, and I can't seem to get them in those separate bins. How many poles do we have that don't, that we could buy outright? That aren't power poles and they're not telephone poles, or just a light pole out there with a light on it?
I honestly have no idea, I mean...
Okay, because that was option, wasn't it, Mark? That was one option?
No, because if you buy the lights, you must buy the poles, the standalone poles.
Right, the standalone poles. But they're not, they're not power poles and they're not telephone poles.
But they're part of that Womiko's price value of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
That's right, but they are individuals, they have no other utilities on them except for that light. Okay, so that's one classification of pole, and then you get the power poles, and then you get telephone poles.
But those poles, we're not buying. You can't buy them.
This really, we're not talking about buying poles, we're talking about buying light fixtures.
I understand.
But we're buying some poles.
Because they come, you know, you...
Right, I understand, they come together, that's why...
And we probably do, I mean, we probably do have in-house an inventory.
There is an absolute inventory, I've got it. I didn't bring it with me, I know there is one. And, Richard, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'd like to just roll back a minute, and so we have all the list of what we're doing as possible projects on the green communities. Do you have any questions or concerns on what's on that list?
No, I think, I personally like the idea of getting the biggest bang for the buck and then applying that money that you've saved to do more with it. So, I have no objections, I like the idea.
Can I ask, could you explain why, I mean, it's common sense to want the biggest bang for the buck? I mean, I guess the question is, is that so? I mean, the way I'm looking at these other options, and again, they're, for a hundred thousand, at Williams Middle School, you can get two seventy-five reduction. Glenbrook, for fifty thousand, you get two sixty-four, that adds up to over five hundred. This project is three fifty-eight, and, maybe I'm missing something, but the one fifty-five wouldn't pay for it all.
It would not, but the payback on that project with the savings is much shorter than the net savings on fuel costs for new boilers.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, when you look at, a lot of times they look at energy efficiency projects and a payback. Like, if it costs you five hundred thousand to do something, how much did you save on your energy bill? And how many years do you capture that back?
Right.
Um, the payback term on something like this isn't, and I have not, in all candor, I have not looked to see what the energy, the schools pay their own utility bill, so I don't know what they're paying specifically for Williams, and if they've specked out the boiler and what it would cost to operate the new boilers. But it's not on the order of magnitude of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year in savings, it's much less than that. So, and we certainly, I, the next level of this is to get that information, run an analysis of payback and, or, you know, ROI, to see if truly this is the biggest bang for the buck, I have a hard time believing it's not. But you're right, it doesn't pay for all of it, but it pays for itself faster than any other project.
And I think one of the things you had mentioned to me is you balance two things. One is MMBTU savings, the other is cash savings per year. And they don't equate, because it's two different measurements. And the Glenbrook school is a backup boiler, so it doesn't mean they really use it, they just need the backup boiler. So there could be no savings for the year.
Yeah, and, you know, the Williams boilers are on the capital plan recommendations for this year. And that's a high priority project for the Williams department. And so it is tempting to say, "Okay, well, let's just buy the boilers with the green communities money." But it just seems like that's kind of a one-off expenditure of the money, and we won't get the substantial savings to fund additional projects going forward. So, that's, and when I started this process off and got the report and started looking at it, I really thought that the streetlight purchasing conversion would be a lot further off. Um, it seems like it's much more achievable than I initially perceived. So, once I realized that this was something that could be within reach, um, I started focusing on it. But, like I said, I do think we need to do an analysis of payback for the boilers versus payback for the streetlights. Mark?
Yeah, a couple of things, I'd like to take a slight step back. One of the things, Stephen, that I'm somewhat concerned about, and I got a culture of ways, I like the concept of, you know, investing money and saving money based on that every year, and taking the savings and reinvesting it and saving more money. But in fact, if all we do is take the savings and reinvest it, the town never actually saves any money, because we're always reinvesting it. And so, you know, I'd like to talk about the concept of saying that, you know, if we invest two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and let's say by investing that, we're saving, pick a number, a hundred thousand dollars a year, that we agree that we're gonna, you know, save twenty percent of it for the town and invest the other eighty percent to get up more savings. And because, as nice as it is to save resources and save energy for the world, ultimately, our goal for doing this wasn't just to save, to save, to save, to save, but was actually to find additional or alternate ways of cutting our budget expenditures.
The variable in that, that I, and I agree with you, it's not, we don't want to look at this as just, you don't want to get in the position where you're now spending money just for the sake of spending it because you have it, I agree. We have an energy reduction plan, obviously, we should try and fulfill the goals set forth in it. The number one variable in why I don't think you could say that at the outset is utility costs. I mean, utility costs are only gonna go up. And so if we are achieving savings and reducing our consumption, and therefore reducing the amount we have to spend every year on utility, on energy, then you, it is a net tax, essentially, it is in essence a tax cut, because then you don't have to spend more tax dollars on higher utility costs. Uh, but that said, if in a given year we save eighty thousand dollars by all the work we've done, and we only have a fifty thousand dollar project, then, yeah, I mean, the, certainly the savings should be returned to the taxpayers.
Well, one thing that was discussed, I don't know if it was here or offline, was, you know, creating, if you will, a revolving fund for the savings to go into, so that we, in essence, created our own green communities fund to reinvest in subsequent years. My only comment to that would be, and we slip off a few bucks every year to help us cut our, or, you know, achieve our budget as opposed to putting it all into a revolving fund.
I know a trend in municipal administration is streetlight utilities. And you establish a streetlight utility with its own enterprise fund. That could be something that we could look at, and then, you know, the street, and then the people, then the people who work at DPW, who work on this, then a portion of their salaries get paid not out of the general fund, but out of the enterprise. I mean, there's many different ways to do it, but you're right, we want to, for the same reason we want to make the best fiscal decision in the expenditure of the grant funds, we want to get the best bang for our buck going forward as well.
Richard?
Yeah, has there been any consideration for LED conversion at our other structures? Any studies undone on that, yeah?
I think that we've already been working on lighting conversion on some of our other structures, but not LEDs specifically.
Yeah, I know, we've done a lot of fluorescent over the years. I don't know, you've likely noticed, like I am, fluorescents are disappearing quickly. I mean, they're almost non-existent even at Costco right now. They're gone, and LEDs have replaced them. So, I mean, that's, we're going through a very quick transition. I just wondered, we don't have any workup then that we can talk about.
I just have a quick question before I go. The practical effects of when we change to LED is, are the lights gonna be dimmer in the streets? And are the historic ones like we have in Colony Hills that you talked about, are these fancy ones that fit in with the neighborhood? Are we gonna have to get rid of those if we make these conversions and commitment?
Can I answer that? The answer is, the second one is no. Walk through the MMA things, there are people who have very outstanding, what I'll call historical-looking lights that are highly efficient. In terms of lights being darker or not, it's based on lumens, it's not, you know, it's the old compact fluorescents, you know, what used to be a sixty-watt bulb is now a thirteen-watt bulb for the same number of lumens. Well, they do the same thing with LEDs. And what, in fact, what we'll find is, as we hire somebody to replace the lights, they're actually gonna tell us, "You need fewer lights in town," because they'll be shining down and not shining up. They've got this whole science of street lighting now that the lights are far more effective in casting light on the things you want to. So, in fact, it'll be better lighting for less lumens and less dollars for the same number of lumens. So, even less dollars for less lumens.
And I also wanted to let you know, in regards to some of those, we lived in one of those historic neighborhoods, and I remember the neighborhood purchased the light poles, so you might want to make sure that they're not being carried on both inventories.
Oh, sure they are.
Yeah. Alex?
So, I guess I'm still not quite getting the comparison of the cost savings. I take it that the streetlight purchase, the cost savings is a combination of it being cheaper to own than to rent from Womiko and less electricity, right? And that less electricity is, corresponds to the three hundred and fifty-eight reduction. Am I correct so far?
Yes.
Okay. The boiler replacements, you'd be saving money corresponding to the MMBTU reductions for those.
Yes.
But you would not be getting savings because we already own the, there wouldn't be the conversion from leasing to owning. So, is the advantage then that you've been talking about for the streetlights is really this leasing-to-own conversion? Because it looks like, just on the numbers I'm getting here, that for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we could get more electricity reduction.
But not greater, but not greater cost savings.
Right, because of the rent-to-own thing.
But also because of the cost of the electricity too.
Alex, the boilers don't use electricity, they use natural gas in our case.
No, I understand, but it's all a utility though.
Right, but the cost per BTU of natural gas is lower than the cost per equivalent BTU, and there are not BTU in electricity. So, to equalize them, they convert the energy to MMBTUs, okay? So, the natural gas is, you know, so in fact, there's less dollar savings in saving a million BTUs of natural gas than there is in saving the equivalent of a million BTUs through the electricity system.
Do we know what the sort of conversion factor then is, like?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure there is, I mean, that's the whole thing.
Like, that would be the...
So, that's why the boilers save us less money to the same number.
But we don't know that, unless we...
I can tell you pretty, I'm pretty sure that the boilers is gonna save us less money because the BTUs are in natural gas.
But I mean, how much is that, though?
Well, but that, we need to get that, we'll figure it out. But I'm saying that the natural gas is the cheapest form of energy in North America right now. And oil is the most expensive.
I appreciate that, but, right.
And going back to the Glenbrook is a backup boiler, so there could be zero savings, depending if they ever use it.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, it's not that we're not gonna replace the boilers. I mean, it just is, as a funding mechanism, we have to apply to use the grants in some way. it just is, as a funding mechanism, we have to apply to use the grants in some way. And based on eligibility and opportunity and where the savings on a given project accrues, using regular capital funds for the boilers and using the Green Communities Grant for something like the streetlights, right now, looks like a better option.
I'm sorry, why? I mean, what's the difference? I mean, I mean, let's say these boilers are capital items that are gonna be voted on at town meeting. What if the streetlights were voted on at town meeting? And, and this was, and the, the boilers were part of the Green Communities Grant. I mean, would there be any difference?
The, the savings on the boilers accrues to the school department's budget, and the savings on the streetlights accrues to the town's budget.
Okay, is that part of what's going on here?
Well, I say what's going on here, just it, it makes it...
I mean, is that part of the priority? I mean...
No.
No, I'm just saying, i- in terms of being able to repurpose the savings for additional energy efficiency gains, having the savings of a project accrue to the town side budget is easier than the school side budget.
I'm sorry, Paul?
I didn't completely understand that, but, I mean, okay, I mean, why, why is, why does it matter?
Because, Stephen, because the town has the discretion to use those cost savings where we don't have the discretion to vote at a town meeting, the school committee would have to utilize those cost savings in their budget for further green energy savings, correct? I mean, that's the simple answer. That's what, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and, and, well, I guess, it does, you said it exactly right. And it adds a, it adds a level of budgetary decision-making and mechanisms to the process that isn't in place for the streetlights. I mean, the streetlight project works for a whole bunch of different reasons, but yet another reason is from a budgetary standpoint, and for achieving the goal of capitalizing additional energy efficiency projects, it's, it's, it's much easier from a town side standpoint, it doesn't, you don't have to set up a separate budgetary mechanism with the school committee to do it.
Such as a revolving fund that we've been talking about.
Yeah, it's, it's just a, a simplified process.
But I mean, if the school committee has to spend less money on electricity, then their needs are less, right, in the next year. And so therefore, their budget would be less.
Yeah, Derek, yeah, sure, Derek, you could do it that way.
But the, there's no guarantee that they, they would say, we saved $10,000 on our utility bills, so we're going to hand that back, $10,000 back to the town too. Until we had an agreement of some kind of a revolving fund, that would be another thing we have to put in place before we move ahead.
Well, to be honest with you, Alex, part of that's driven by the deadline of grants. I'd wanna know what that would look like from a financial standpoint going ahead.
Of the school versus town?
Correct. I'd wanna know more specific the savings are, and with a January 29 deadline, I don't know that we'd have time to sort all that out.
Okay. I need to bring Paul in because he's here.
Thank you. You know, one of the things, just looking at the projects, and, you know, I can, I haven't, I mean, boilers are boilers, they have to replace on schedules and so forth. But we're talking about two buildings in which the school committee is, is having discussions about that might not be around in a few years. They actually have a task force, or if it's a, you and I were at one of those meetings a year ago, looking to talk about replacing those one, if not both, buildings. And I, you know, I would think that before we would put money into a boiler system, that might not be there. And I know we can use it in a new building, but everything that we used, everything that we put into this school, in the old school, to save money, windows, boilers, and all this stuff, was, none of it was used in this, in this building. Some of it's been repurposed, but most of it wasn't. This, the window replacement, the guy that spoke at town meeting, Barry's, I think is his last name, he gave a presentation up at Greenwood a couple of years ago and said windows were the worst things to buy because there is no energy efficiency in windows. And I know you can go from single paint to double paint, but to me, the, the streetlights make the best sense in the world in the sense that, from the perspective of, even if we employ a contract to maintain them and repair them and so forth, we have the, we have the ability to say, we don't want that one, we don't want this one. And if you actually go in and find someone who just doesn't buy the streetlights, but actually will advise you on what you need, we, we can either save some money that way or have better lighting through town, you know, for safety purposes. And I, I think that's the, that's the low-hanging fruit, and I think the best return on the buck immediately. And then, with that savings, look at, oh, because we're, I mean, obviously, we're gonna apply for other grants next year. I mean, this isn't...
Um, Dave, is that possible on a yearly basis?
Is it just a one-year?
Yes. No, once the money has been expended, the process of documenting has been accomplished, each year you can apply for another $250,000.
Oh.
Now, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get it even though you're still a green community. For example, Belchertown this past year applied for solar heating for their pool, they didn't get it because the OER felt that there was not a sufficiently short term of return on the investment. So, but you can reapply every year for another $250,000.
Wow. So, is the first year is only 155?
Well, the first year is 135, and then if you have in place already a site for putting up solar power, for example, you get another 10,000. And then based on the equation that the state applies for a town of this size, of this economic density, you got another 10,300. So, the baseline was 135.
Thank you. Alex?
Now, if, if we do this grant application for the streetlights, I'm assuming that's dependent upon putting in place all the other aspects of this plan. True or not true?
You mean the purchase of the streetlights?
Correct.
Correct.
And so, let's say, and so how would you envision that being implemented? Would that be another item at town meeting that would have to be voted on?
Possibly so. I mean, we have, we have to look at what it would, what the net cost would be with Womiko incentives and lease-to-own provisions. I mean, I'm, my approach is to look at this as a whole loaf.
Right.
You know, the cost to purchase and the cost to replace every single streetlight at once as part of one contract or one initiative. What's that overall cost? If we get the grant for it and offset it, what's left and how do you find, and then, and then decide, do we need to go to town meeting for appropriation? Can we do, you know, then we kinda figure out where to...
I guess what I'm leading up to is, I mean, this is a situation somewhat rare for the Select Board. We actually have some discretion on how we're gonna spend money, right? We're gonna take a vote, we're gonna be able to decide how this $155,000 is spent. Other capital projects rise and fall at town meeting, right? Some things...
They rise and fall with the Select Board.
We, we will put on those also.
Right. Well, yeah, but, I mean, even if we approve them, they could be shot down. So, I guess the question is, let's say we vote on this $155,000 grant for the streetlights, and for whatever reason, the rest of the implementation of this program is voted down at town meeting. Where are we? I mean, I don't...
I hear what you're saying.
And maybe, and I'm not, I don't know the answer. May, maybe there's a way to save it, or, or is there?
I, I guess I would say, I, I, I am approaching this in trying to figure out, based on the information I have at my disposal today, what is the best way for the town to move forward on this. I, I guess I understand that what you're saying is technically true.
Well, not just technically.
Hypothetically speaking, a town meeting could vote down purchasing the streetlights, and then our grant to convert them, well, we would still get the savings for the converted streetlights, but we would be converting Womiko's lights in that case, which we could still, we would still lower our energy cost, but we wouldn't get that additional savings through ownership. So, we can still do the conversion, I would guess, either way, and I don't have that for certain from Womiko, but I'm sure they wanna reduce their, they wanna get credit for doing these incentive things.
And I think the point you're making, Alex, is that's true. Let's say we decided on the boilers, town meeting can knock those down, and if we can't implement a plan for spending the 155, I'm sure maybe we'd just lose it this year, as a possibility.
Well, we could, I think we could do the boilers. If we decided to apply...
No, if they, he's saying, what happens at town meeting? If town meeting even votes down the boilers, we, that's our form of government.
Well, wait a minute.
But we...
But if we, if we spent, if we decide on the grant, and we're gonna replace these two boilers, which we could do for, for the amount that we have, that would be done, right? There wouldn't be any further need for another vote.
There wouldn't have to go to town meeting. Okay.
Not appropriating money from town money.
That's true.
So, I guess what, what I was getting to is, I mean, and the way I understand this streetlight thing, I mean, this is a project, like many that have been before at the Select Board in prior years, that seems to make sense, but for, hasn't been implemented. So, that makes me think that the fact that something as complicated as this is not a sure thing it will be implemented. Whereas, you know, the boilers are a straight-line accomplishment.
Yeah, no doubt. I mean, what you're saying is true. I, I think we could, like I said, to me, what I'm proposing is, in my judgment, in the best interest of the town. And if the board feels differently, so be it. We'll apply for the boilers.
Paul, and then David, and then Richard. So, Paul?
I'm just gonna get back to the point of, with boilers, I, I would never support doing something knowing that those buildings might not be there in two years. From the, from the time I was on the finance committee, we put hundreds of thousands of dollars into windows in the high school for energy efficiency purposes, with the guarantee, and doors, and doors for energy efficiency purposes, that we were guaranteed that they would be used in the building of a new high school. Obviously, they don't meet the, the codes or, or they didn't, they didn't qualify, you couldn't use them because, to qualify for some of the grants we got and so forth. None of it was used. And, and I think that we'd be silly to buy boilers, use this grant money to buy boilers. And even though there's a payback in sense of saving energy, the issue is those schools might not be there. And, and if you're gonna build a new school, maybe they can be transferred over, maybe, and I'm talking within the next, you know, couple of years, that's gonna be back on the, it's gonna be back on the agenda from the school side of it. At least, that's what I've been told, that they're waiting a few years. And, but we know those buildings need repair, we know something has to be done to them. And I think to, to take money that can be used for, I understand the streetlight thing is complicated, it is, but it isn't. I think it's a, it isn't, it's been done, let's put it that way, in other communities. This isn't something that we're invented. And I think part of the reason that it failed was that some of the money that we were talking about at the time was the energy savings. There were different rate classifications for the, the bulbs that you had in there, and LEDs weren't one of them.
Yeah, before you got here.
But I'm just saying, so I think, you know, that was the bigger issue with that, but then we also didn't have a grant that we could utilize for it. And I, I just think that the streetlights are, are the no-brainer part of this as opposed to the boilers.
I do want, sorry, just, I just wanna follow this point real quick. I do wanna note again that the, the boilers are a part of the capital plan, and the discussion about the buildings that you just mentioned will be a part of the capital planning discussion.
We'll have this discussion again.
So, that moment is coming up, but for the purposes of this presentation, we're just looking at leverage.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a comment about the boilers, but before I do, I, I wanna make another comment, which is pertinent, that we need to understand that the application process is the 25th of January, has to be in by then. But if the DOER does not accept the application, you can reapply subsequently to get the money applied to some other project. And the reason I mention that is because I asked Jim Berry the other day whether boilers were necessarily going to be accepted as an appropriate use of the money, and his comment was, not always. It depends on how DOER sees the value in the investment. And for example, a boiler that's likely not to be used, they're probably not gonna support that. So, I, I just think it's important. Having said that, if you elected to go forward with the boiler, and they said, well, this doesn't fly, you can still come back and present them with another project.
Thank you.
The money that you have is your money. They won't take that away from you. And I believe I'm correct, that you may not have to spend it all in the first year. There are some towns, especially hill towns, that don't have the infrastructure to carry through on the projects that they've come up with, and it takes them a period of time to get through it all.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, echo on Paul's part, because we said that from the capital planning committee aspect too, that these two schools have been up in the air, and there's, I totally agree. You don't put a 20-year boiler in a building that's only gonna be there for another year. I, I wish somebody could stand before us right now and say, this is what we're gonna do, and then we could appropriately respond. And we've asked that before. I'm also, so if I took this whole back sheet, which it sounded like that could pretty easy slip off, I'm a little disappointed we only have really one project that we're really looking at. I, I would've thought we would've had, with a town the size, some more robust energy-saving projects to be able to be brought forth to this board. But we basically have the streetlight purchase and a couple of boiler purchases, which sound like they will die in debate.
No, I, I think the boiler, like I said, there's, you, you have a pretty robust list that's in the plan, and then that I included in the thing. It's a timeliness issue. What are we, what projects are ready? And I, like, as David mentioned, it doesn't have to necessarily be in the first year, but I think it certainly behooves us to do it, because the sooner you do the project, the sooner you can achieve the savings. We do have a robust list of projects, but in terms of what's ready to go...
Let me, let me finish what I'm saying. All these projects, this robust list has already been completed.
Some, most, some has some unknown.
And the ones that aren't, they're, they're uncompleted are the ones that you've got listed, in addition to some other ones, which sound like they're procedural type, best practices, and they're not purchasing anything. They're just policies that we have to put in, which can be a, a slip of paper. So theoretically, we only have these, these three plus the lights in here for a town the size. I, I just, I'm a little bit remiss. I, I just got a feeling we got a hell of a lot more energy opportunities to save in this town than four opportunities. That's, that's it.
Mike?
Richard, I, I would tend to agree with you, except for the comment of scale. For example, one of the biggest opportunities we have, which isn't on the list, is to convert our sewer pumping, our sewer pump electrical drive to a DC motor, you know? But even that pales in scale to some of these, you know, because that's a, it's a humongous motor, it runs all the time, and changing it from AC to DC saves you a bundle of money. Okay? But, but that's still a fraction of what you get from these other ones. And so, I think what we found, when we look way back at this stuff, was we've got a whole bunch of projects that'll save us a dime. We only had a handful of projects that would save us a dollar. And I think that's what you're seeing. You know, we can go back and relook at those, but, but at the time, so you're right, there's a lot of projects out there, but very few are on this scale.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not shown on this list. I mean, that's, that's my only point.
Right.
I wanna reiterate that the projects are tied to specifically municipal operations. It's not town-wide, you know, like a green roof on Big Y, it's specifically...
No, I'm talking about town operations. We've got a lot of structures.
Yeah, I think we can work to expand the list, and hopefully, if we get this rotating and going to further investment, we'll find more that we can come up with.
Not for this call, you're not.
Not for this call. We have, we have...
Okay, I'm talking about this call.
Till January 25. I personally think that the, I like the purchase of the lights. I think it dovetails into two issues that we've been talking about, which is saving revenue every, um, cost savings every year, as well as this, we can save on the electrical. So, I really like the, the street purchase as the, as a wonderful plan for this year. What I thought was interesting, which I know we don't have time to do now, but if we have a little time moving it forward, is you said Watertown went in with a purchase with another town. Maybe if Wilberham or some of the other towns are interested in doing this at the same time, we might be able to even look at more cost savings.
Only if, I don't understand how you save money by purchasing with another town. They're purchasing their lights, and we're purchasing our lights.
I'm talking about buying the, the volume of, buying the LEDs.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the things that Watertown did is they split the, they split the contract. They bid out the purchase of the lights, and then they bid out the installation of the lights. And my understanding from Watertown, that was, that was advice given by Mr. Woodbury, and that did yield some cost savings. So, yes, when we get to that point, I, I, like I said, I'm sure we're gonna retain somebody to help us through this process, to make sure we do it the right way.
And is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission able to help us with some of this?
I don't know with the level of specificity that someone like, you know, Siemens or George Woodbury, like, you know, someone that does this for a living could, but we certainly can...
He sold his company. And every number I got, I called the MMA to try to find him. Oh, you talked to him? Oh, good, because they said he, but none of them worked. He said he's a consultant to the company.
The numbers in that slide are ones he gave me today. He went back and looked at it.
And I'm just, just for reference points, I mean, he came in to talk, we had a renewable energy task force, and this was, Robin had formed that. And if we talk to anybody, that's the guy, because he is the, he is the top expert on this program, period. And if you're getting advice from him, you're getting it from the right guy, because any, I trust his numbers beyond anybody else's, without a doubt.
Murray? Alex, and then Richard.
So, we, we've had this discussion about the boilers. And I understand Paul's point. I think it would be ridiculous if we were going to, you know, tear down a school and, and putting in an investment that would be destroyed. I'm assuming because these boilers are on this list is because they're necessary. Is that true or no?
Yes. And like I said, I, as a part of the capital planning discussion, that discussion will, you know, I, I don't wanna get that out of context of the overall capital planning process.
Well, but this is the... Well, but this is the alternative for this, so I guess we have to talk about it.
Sure. It doesn't mean these are defective, though. It just means that if we changed them, we'd get the savings right now, that it's kind of...
They are, need to be replaced.
I said, this doesn't mean they're defective.
No, but, but, I mean, I mean, are these boilers something that are going, that, you know, they're, they're, they're useful life and could fail?
Uh, I, I think so, yes.
Okay, so that sounds like they're necessary.
Anything, anything could fail. I...
Well, but, I mean, but, you know, it's sort of like, it's, it's like in my house, I had a hot water heater that had been installed in 1987, you know, like that, that needed to be replaced.
If I'm not mistaken, this is the first year these have showed up on a program.
Okay.
Okay? So, that means that if just all of a sudden discovered these are going to fail, then I'll, I'll let it rest at that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess that would be a good thing to know, is just how necessary this is, because to me, you know, if, uh, you know, as an other option, I'm, I'm assuming this is something that we have to do, um, and...
Again, the, the capital planning committee has not reviewed, is in the process of reviewing the projects. I guess I'd like to see what they come up with in their analysis of, of the boiler projects and all the other requests.
Has the capital planning commission looked at the streetlights?
No.
So...
I want to separate...
So, so I, I feel like you're, you're sort of pushing back on the boilers, because we don't have enough review of it, but then it's, it's in the same posture as the streetlights.
No, I, I think that my review of, of the, of the options so far show that the streetlights are overwhelmingly the best option for us, based on the goals that I said, I, I talked about. Um, you can technically use this money to apply to purchase boilers.
No, but, but it's not because they're on a different footing in terms of the amount of review.
Well, no, what do you, I don't know if I follow that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I get the feeling, it's like, well, we don't want to talk about how necessary the boiler replacements are, because the capital planning commission hasn't gone through it.
No, that was in response to the comment that if we do these streetlights with this grant, that means we're not going to do the boilers. That's, that's the only thing I was trying to clarify, that that may not necessarily be the case. It, if during, I, we have to write the grant for January 29. That is, that is the reason why we're having this discussion tonight.
And see, to me, like, that argues in favor of the boilers, because...
Correct, correct.
Because it's, it's a straight line accomplishment with the money that we have.
Yes, but, but when you look at it in the terms of what do we get out of it, it, it really, I think, pales in comparison.
We don't even know that.
We have a very strong sense of that.
Marie?
Well, I'd, I'd love to have some sense of the numbers, if, if, other than yours. I mean, I, I haven't heard one bit of numbers of, of a comparison of the cost savings between the two.
Richard?
I'll yield to the gentleman at the other end, and then I'll come back.
Verzi, Verzi, okay. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, in the last 11 years, because I was on finance for a couple of years, we have replaced boilers, and I, I just talked to Mark about it. At one point, we took a boiler from the high school, put it into one of the middle schools, and I would really like to know the, you know, where the boilers are in their life cycle, where the, the backup boilers are in their life cycle, uh, before, I would say, you know, even from the, and again, I really like to hear what capital planning has to say about them, too. I mean, that's, it's going to be, if they need replacement, they're going to come back and say, "We need replacement." I'd like to make a motion, Marie, that we use a green energy grant to purchase, for the streetlight purchase program.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I think we need a clarification. I'd like, I'd like to ask Paul to clarify that we use the green energy for upgrading the streetlights from incandescent or halogen, or whatever they are, to higher efficiency bulbs, and as a subsequent step to the town purchasing the lights. I'm not sure we can use green energy to purchase the lights.
The reason why this is before the board is that the board has to sign a grant application to green communities. So, the directive, I think, is pursue streetlight purchase and LED conversion, which is essentially what you said. Um, and that's, truthfully, I, I, the motion's been made. I, I think I only need a consensus so we can do the grant, so we can get the grant application done, but a vote is even better, and then at some point in time, the, by the end of January, the application will be back before you.
Well, I just made a motion, because we'd be here for another two hours, so I figured that might cut down on some time.
And is the clarification good enough to Mark?
Yes, it's for the streetlight purchase and, and upgrade to...
Any further discussion?
And maybe Mr. Santinello would not have made that motion if he'd heard the first hour of the presentation, which sounded like none of these figures are locked in at anything. We have no idea what the real savings are, so we, you can't trust this paid thing in front of you, because it was stated in the first hour, these figures are possibly going to change and modify a great deal. That's not to say it's not a good project, but don't trust what you see in front of you.
Okay.
Because all the figures, they're, they're not accurate at this point.
Any further other discussion?
I, I would suggest that we put off this vote until next week. Sounds like we would still have enough time so that we would get some of this cost information. Um, I, I don't, I don't know what the downside to that would be.
It's a pretty substantial grant application.
Any, um...
I'm sorry?
It's a pretty substantial grant application, and cutting, taking a week out of our timeline is a downside, and I, 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 we will run the numbers. Um, uh, I, it entails getting some information from the school department, and then doing some, again, back-of-the-envelope analyses, but, um, I don't, I, I think we know enough about our energy costs generally and, and this, uh, and how energy consumption works to know that...
I mean, do you have any, I mean, do you even have a ballpark figure? Because I, I don't even have a sense of it.
To go from an 82% efficiency to 95% efficiency, David, I don't, I mean, it's, it's usually a pretty slow pay, payback on boilers.
Yeah, Alex, I, I, I understand your concern. I guess my, I don't share it, though, because of my history with the streetlight project and seeing how viable it was based on a few years ago, when there was less depreciation, so their cost with Womiko was going to be higher, there was less, you know, electric rates were lower than, than they are now. There was a payback then. We didn't do it because of, we didn't have the resources, not because it wasn't a good project. So, based on that, yeah, we need to refine the numbers. We will refine the numbers, but I, and I'm not asking you to, you know, trust me, it's good, but I'm just saying, my vote for it is because I've gone through the numbers in the past, and they were good. That's all I can tell you.
I mean, I guess the other concern I have is it feels a little bit like trying to cross a stream and, and sort of pausing halfway in the middle, um, because if, if the rest of this program isn't implemented, then the, it makes a lot less sense, if, because as we were talking about, a lot of the cost savings is the rent-to-own, uh, conversion. I think it makes more sense to, to have this all together, so that when there is a vote for it, we know we're, we're going to do the whole thing. I mean, we could end up voting for this and sort of going halfway across the stream and, and waiting there, you know, and, and that doesn't seem very smart to me.
Well, I, I support the streetlight purchase, and I think it's, it's based on sort of what you were talking about before. This has been in front of the board for many years, and it's been brought up. The savings have been there, and we've always been hesitant to take that first step, and, um, I think that our hesitancy has cost the town money in the past, and it's time to take that step with all the changes that Mark's describing. Uh, there are much more efficient lighting that's out there. The prices are coming down. Other towns are doing it. We're not the first out there, and we have a consultant who really, as Paul said, has a lot of experience with this, and I'm comfortable working further with him, so I'll be supporting the streetlight purchase, and I think it wonderfully dovetails with the green community grant coming at this time.
I have one more comment, and then we, you can go ahead and vote. Uh, we were pulled together tonight to discuss this proposal, and in the process, I have not received factual information, and, and I can't support a program that I don't have factual information. I'm not saying the streetlights is not the best thing since butter on grits, but we don't have the facts and figures in front of us, and that's what the meeting was for, was the exchange of this information. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. All right. Um, all those in favor of using the streetlight purchase and LED, uh, conversion for the green communities grant? All those opposed? Okay, that's three to two. So, uh, this now grant allows, um, town manager to go ahead to firm up the program, working with the consultant, and get the grant together, and thank you to green communities for all of the work you've done in putting us on the path of this grant. And this was the only topic we had on for this evening. Um, I did hand out a article that just was in the paper today announcing $52 million in state funding to, um, for other projects in regards to changes in town, so we will look at those and other things coming up. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you for joining us.